Okay, ladies and gentlemen. Councilmember, do you recognize that we have a core of the president?
I think so.
A core of the president, I think this meeting over. I'm going to ask our city manager, Brandon Douglas, if he will do an implication for us at this time.
Bless Purdy. Dear Father, thank you for the stead, just thank you for the praise and for all the blessings. I just thank you for allowing us to come together, Lord, with the body. I just thank you for giving us this beautiful day. I just thank you for the process, and thank you for our help, and just be with our soldiers, Lord, and our first responders, and help all the ones who are continuing to struggle with COVID, Lord, just be with our nation, fill our lands, and just help us tonight as we do the business of the people, just guide us, protect us, and watch over us, in Christ's name, I pray. Amen.
And councilperson, Ann Snay, would you please let us know?
Thanks for the allegiance to the life of the United States of America, and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, and with all with liberty and justice for all.
Council, you have your agenda that has been presented to you, and I would, at this time, ask for Sonny to make a motion to you about the agenda as presented.
Make a motion. Oh, second.
In a second. Would all of those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And those on Zoom, raise your hand, and let me know. Thank you. The motion has carried. This is a public hearing. We appreciate everyone who came out tonight, and the first part of our public hearing is going to be a discussion of our millage rate that we want you to listen to, and then, at that point, we will later solicit comments. So I'm going to reverse the order here a little bit, so if your package says that Beverly Ragland, our finance director, is going to go first, I'm going to, before she does that, ask Brandon, if he will, to present us with a brief overview of where we have arrived at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilman, board. Appreciate you allowing me to go. I know Beverly put this on because last time I just don't give anybody any chance to speak, so nice try. Nonetheless, this is the third and final required public hearing that we are required to have on the millage rate. As you may recall, September 14th, we received direction to move forward, staff recommended millage rate advertisement of 6.78 mils. That was the most that the city could consider in terms of adopting a millage rate. As such, due to the fact that the city was not moving forward with the requested rollback rate, we subsequently advertised, as well as conducted administrative hearing on September 24th at 9:00 a.m. Were upon no public attendance. At the 6:00 p.m. meeting that same day, September 24th, we had the second of three public hearings where upon the same information was presented to the body. We did have attendance in person and Zoom. Therefore, comments were made and taken into consideration. As such, this is the third and final. Staff has been working with the elected body to identify how we can move forward with a millage rate that could help sustain the general fund over time. Where we are at is, in your package, you have the same information. We have not generated any additional information beyond that of what I'll hand out in a moment when Mr. Ragland speaks, but ultimately, we can be prepared to field questions from the elected body. It is my understanding that we have not received any additional feedback beyond that of the public hearing at 6:00 p.m., so we did not generate any additional analysis beyond that of what we've already disclosed. Once again, this is the millage rate. We will go through a separate process at the staff level to go through the 2021 budget process. So we will begin that on October 22nd. Once the millage rate is adopted, we'll move forward with finalizing the budgets, get them out to you all, publish the 2021 budget for the public to have on October 22nd, I believe is our scheduled work session, and then the November and December process for adoption. So with that, I think that, just wanted to, I go over anything, but...
Okay. In meeting with staff, and specifically with our finance director, Beverly Ragland, we have identified, I am happy to announce that they have identified an approximate 5% reduction in expenditures, and therefore, 6.78 mils may not be exactly what we need at this point in time to say that we can balance our budget. So therefore, I'm going to turn this over to our finance director, and Beverly, would you please update us on what millage rate that has been determined that we will need to balance our budget?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, finance has worked preliminary budget numbers and came up with a millage rate of 5.655 mils. That is a one-millage rate increase over last year's of 4.655. We feel like we have identified cuts that will allow us to do this and still have a balanced budget. Again, we have not finalized the budget process. We are just beginning, actually, but we have to start somewhere, and the millage rate was the first place. So again, we'll enter into the budget process, and that is later on this month, but at this time, finance does recognize that 5.655 mils will balance the general fund budget.
So that announcement is 5.655, correct?
Yes, sir.
That's right. And, Mr. Mayor, I think I've just handed you all a sheet. Mary, if you could go to the very last page of that packet, or, excuse me, I'm sorry, page, that one, I believe. That was the original proposed 6.78, the one that is up on the screens now, because, once again, I think part of what the public's, what we've heard is, what are the implications to them as a property owner or taxpayer? So in light of the proposed 5.655 mils, this afternoon, we quickly used the same chart that we spoke on the 24th, and we essentially illustrated that through that same series of property values from 50,000 to 500, what the 4.655 mils would yield by way of costing a taxpayer, as well as a proposed 2020 5.655. So I can speak on the specifics of both. Let me hand this out to the press, to our attendees. So, once again, you may recall that the 140,000, the 6.78 mils, would have been an increase of about $119 a month, or $9.92, or, excuse me, a year, and 9.92 a month. Under the 5.655 mils, at 140 valuation, it would be a total annual net increase of $56, or $4.67 per month. So what you have before you and on the screen is what our best attempt at trying to identify how we can take a 5% or 6% reduction in expenditures, and, once again, for full disclosure, until such time as we go through the budget process, we do not know if this would result in us having to utilize any of our fund balance, but preliminarily, we feel comfortable that this should enable us to balance the general fund books without the substantial use of fund balance to preserve that capital and to maintain about a three-month reserves, and ideally, you want between three to six months of operating reserves.
So councilmembers, do you want to have any questions directed to our staff at this point?
I know. I think I want to commend us for the job they've done. They have really worked hard for trying to work through this process, and we just want y'all to know, we really appreciate the hard work.
Thank you. I greatly appreciate you doing that. Anyone else? Online, councilmembers that we have on Zoom, can you hear me? Do you have any questions for staff at this time?
I hear, I see Sonny's lips moving, but I don't hear...
I think I keep unmuting him. I'm sorry. I unmuted him and he muted. Or you do it, Sonny.
I think that is her.
Okay, here we go. Okay. I'll stop. Y'all unmute yourself. Seems like every time I unmute him, they... Kurt?
Kurt, go ahead.
Wait, now I got him muted. Oh, my gosh. This is what happened the other day. They were telling me that as soon as I was muting him, they were unmuting. All right, Kurt, you do it. I'm not touching it. Okay. Can you hear him? Will you test it?
Take care of myself.
There you go.
There you go.
There you go, sorry.
Sorry, Kurt, if you will, please, sir.
Kurt? What happened to him?
I think he doesn't have anything to add. Maybe that's what the thumbs up meant.
Oh.
Sonny? Can I hear you?
I understand I'm being here. I appreciate the hard work staff's done to find some opportunities. I do know that some cuts have been identified, and whether those are finalized with our budget is yet to be determined. I also know that some of the larger reductions were made possible because of our 2020 SPOSS funds, and I want to reiterate how thankful we are to have those, and realize that those funds will be used for things that have never been used before. We've done roads mostly, and now we will be able to use those SPOSS funds for things other than just mundane items. I appreciate the hard work.
Thank you. If there are no other questions from staff, then I would invite our members of the audience to come forth and say any statements that they would like to tell us. That would be, yes.
Are you all speaking?
We'll let you go first.
My name is Susan Horton. I was here last meeting.
Yes.
And I just came tonight and did the update. I wouldn't really blame us speaking, but I was coming at first, and putting the idea out there that if you did go up that high, then we might not be attracted to other businesses that might be coming to Jasper, because we're, you know, we don't want to be crowded here, but we do need businesses that will get good jobs to our young people. And I do know that the first millage rate would have been higher than given in county and most of the other areas combined. We do county, city, and school tax. If the first millage rate that you had to post would have been higher than some of the counties around it, so I would hate to lose industries that would have came here. So I am very happy to see that y'all worked real hard and got it down, and I do appreciate that, and I do think that that would really help the future for Jasper and Piggins County. And thank you all, and I do appreciate it.
Thank you. Dr. Keller?
Yes. Folks, I thought about what I would like to say tonight. I think that in order to run a city, that you have to have the funds to do so, and if you look at the distribution of funds that we've seen here recently, who would suffer the cuts if we had to, like, go back to the old days of no tax raises? It would be the people that we didn't want to go through the austerity measures, the police, the emergency people, and I think that doing what you're doing takes a lot of courage. And not only that, I think that a lot of people forget that you too are citizens of the city, and you're voting to where you're going to have to step up to the pay window as well, and I think that that's what we all need to do, and that's why Ann Bailey and I are here tonight. We have a check for $1,000 made out to the city of Jasper. We enjoy the city. We enjoy the park. We enjoy walking downtown, and I wish that, in this time, and you guys have suffered already from people being critical of having to step up in a time of hardship to raise taxes, but why didn't this happen in the past 26 years when we had better times? So now, someone has to have the courage to step up, and we just want to help. We applaud you. We think what you're doing is wonderful, and we like this place. We don't want our people to have to suffer, the first responders, the police. I think they've suffered enough in regards to, like, having budgetary shortfalls, and it's not, you think about, people will be critical, and they will say something along the lines of, they're not being thrifty with the money. I think that's a misnomer. I think they've been very thrifty, and I think they've been thrifty to the point of where it hurts, and we sometimes forget that those people have jobs and children, and they're part of the community too. So thank you for what you do, and...
Thank you, Dr. Keller.
Thank you. And I hope that there will be other people in the community that are like us. We don't live in the city limits, but we enjoy the city, that will step up and they will say, we want to help too. So thank you.
Thank you. And, well, one brief moment, I want to say that the city council has done an incredible job, and that, in the beginning, the thing that impressed me most was that I could count on transparency from all of our council members. So we have tried to do this the very best way that we know possible, you know, to do anything about a raise in the time of COVID. None of us are crazy. None of us are stupid, and none of us spend money for the city that shouldn't be spent. By the same token, we also recognize that at some point, things are not sustainable, and you have to fix your own house. So we're in the process of fixing our own house, and we're going to press forward with that. We thank you so much for the comments, and now I want to address anyone on Zoom that would have a comment. Please raise your hand if you would like to speak. I see a gentleman, I cannot see his name, but would you please? Can we invite him to come in here?
I think he said he wanted to speak from the lobby.
He is out there. Sit back down.
Do you want to do any, if there's a motion for you to hold on?
Yeah, we can do that, whatever order you take.
Who is, can anyone see? I couldn't see.
Ma'am, council, if you would just make sure that anyone who speaks, that we can hear them, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, then we're going to, let's see if this works, and if not, immediately stop and we'll start over. Sir?
Yes.
How are you doing?
I've had better days.
Okay. We hope this will be a good one, then.
Me too.
I'd like you to state your name on the record and your address, please.
My name is Nathan Barfield. I live on 103 Hobson Road in Jasper, Georgia.
Okay.
I do have some concerns. I know there's a lot of people that I spoke with that wanted to attend but could not, so I hope that you guys understand that there's more of a community response to this than just who you're seeing and what you're seeing now. There's, at least the response that I've heard from most people, is that there were concerns about how the county and city had been spending money in the past. Now, I'm not saying I know much about it, but I'm saying that is what I have heard and seen. And my understanding was, is that there was a judge here recently who had been arrested because of mishandling of funds. Does anybody recall that? No? Okay.
This is nothing to do with our city.
I understand.
Thank you.
But the way it's being viewed by the community is kind of one in the same, and it's not saying that y'all are the same as them. I'm saying the community as a whole has now questioned how the money is being spent overall. Not saying anybody here did anything wrong. That's just the opinion of the public court that we all get held to. Now, what I was looking through, and unless I was looking at the wrong numbers, there was quite a bit of money over the past several years that has been spent on just flat-out overtime. Does anybody care to disagree with that?
We're here to listen.
I know, I'm just, I'm making sure that I'm not saying anything that somebody's immediately going to object to.
No. There will be no objection to whatever you say.
My understanding was, is when I started flipping through the Excel files, is there was a fair amount, more than $100,000 over a few years, that had been spent with overtime. If you're asking for people to say, you got to trust us that we need this, the first thing I'm going to do is question, well, how are we spending the money we already have? When I see the amount of money that's being spent on overtime, to me, that is probably a miss, what's the best word I'm looking for? A misuse of the labor we have now. Now, I understand there's projects that come up, you need somebody to cut out a tree, or somebody need to do a special detail or whatnot, but overtime tends to be somebody who's already on the books, and if they're using that much overtime every single year, why are we not saving ourselves the money and actually hiring a person for that spot? Because the overtime would more than offset the cost of hiring a new employee. I think that's something that needs to be looked at. I also looked over the past several years, there was a fire truck bought, or something over here bought that needed to be bought, but I don't see any major expenditures that should be coming up along this side of the lines that would indicate the kind of increase that's being requested across the board. So I need a little more than just, hey, here's a chart, here's a, we're going to have a meeting about it, for somebody to explain to me and probably the general public, because I think you can tell I'm a little more in tune than most people, what this is being used for. Now, I apologize, I couldn't get here on time. I had a bit of a family emergency. Couldn't make the other two appointments because I was working like most people. I understand, and I appreciate that you guys have pointed out that during this time of, this very trying time of this pandemic, a lot of people are barely hanging on, and while this may only be a $15 increase a month for some people, that $15 is part of what goes to buying food for our kids who go to school. There's food at school that they can buy, but at the same time, our kids don't necessarily can eat that food now. And I've eaten that food before. I'm not saying anything wrong with the food, I'm just saying my kids can't eat it. That's a half a box of diapers to somebody. That's a half a can of baby formula. All these things matter, especially to those of us that's barely above the line now. So I get a $5 or $10 increase on my gas bill. I get a $5 or $10 increase on my electric bill. I get a $15 or $20 increase on my mortgage payment. Gas goes up, and now I got to spend an extra $15 or $20 a month on gas. It adds up, especially in a time when a lot of folks ain't got enough work to be had. There's work out there, but not everybody can do the same job, not everybody can do the same thing. My wife is a medical transcriptionist. She's absolutely stuck behind a computer. Guess what happens when a doctor's office closes? There's no transcription work to be had. My wife, who was pregnant, is therefore unable to go out and find a job, nor would I want to put her out in the general public in her condition. So I need more than just a, well, we got to fix our own house, no offense to you, sir. I need more than that. I need a detailed explanation. I need a reason why the funds that the county and city have been getting recently is not enough, and not enough to not only indicate a tax increase, but to indicate a significant one, because everybody I've talked to, every homeowner I know of, says, this ain't a dollar or two. This is like a 50%. It's pretty substantial.
Actually, if you were listening, I'm sorry, you got your rate...
Yes, sir.
You would have heard that the millage rate that we did adopt, okay, was going to be significantly less than the top that we had to tell by law.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so the one that we have adopted, what is 5. what?
5.655.
5.655.
And what was it prior to the increase?
4.655.
Okay, and then what was the original or proposed, the top?
6.78.
Now, unfortunately, as analytical as I am, now I'm going to question if the millage rate that we came to was acceptable, why was there an increase above that even proposed?
We have to propose the top. We do not have to do that, but if what we're looking at at that particular point in time says that that's what it takes to balance our books, we are required by law to do a balanced budget, and that budget is audited every single year.
So again...
So at this point, I have given you more than what I have given to anyone else, and do you have any further comments for us?
Yes, sir. I do. I appreciate your response, but it seems to me that if the budget was balanced as many years as it was at the previous millage rate, we still really haven't got a good answer on why the increase was necessary, and I'd like an answer for that.
You're getting all the answers you're going to get at this point in time, but thank you for your comment.
How would I go about getting those answers, sir?
Mayor, if I may, we do have an October 22nd budget work session that'll be open to the public, where we will identify all the different changes in the 2021 proposed budget. You can turn that...
So we have to vote, or you guys have to vote on an increase in millage rate before we find out what we're spending the money on? Is that, is that what I understand?
The budget's not done.
We're still...
Unfortunately, the way the law reads, we have to do the millage and advertise it before we do the budget.
Who, just, because I'm ignorant, so help me out here, who wrote that law?
That'd be a lot of people down in Atlanta.
Yeah.
Lord, I like to think we're a lot smarter than them folks.
But that's what happened, is we had to advertise to the top, because you can't go back down.
So, and I'm just trying to understand, and trust me, there's a lot of people just trying to understand. I don't want to be mad, I just want to be agitated.
Well, and that's, at a certain point, we have to go to another, and your time is...
Yeah, procedurally, just procedurally to recap again, not to be disingenuous, but the city's millage rate, applied to city taxpayers only, is 4.655 mils. So we run on a fiscal year of January to December 31st. So we have gotten the tax digest from the county who do the reassessments, they give it to us in September. We then advertise to adopt the millage rate because we have to turn that back into the state, because we can't do it just whenever we want to, we have these procedures we have to follow. Then, in November and December, we have public hearings on the 2021 budget that will begin January 1, 2021. So what's happening is, you approve the millage rate, then you have a budget workshop, which we'll have on October 22nd at 6:00 p.m., and then on November 2nd, we'll have a public meeting before this body to talk about all the stuff that was talked about in the public meeting on October 22nd. Then on December 7th, we'll consider to approve the 2021 budget. So we have to put all these steps in motion to...
So just to put it in layman's terms, we're making a guess on how much money that we need for next year, then we're going to put together the budget and try to match that number?
Well, budget is a guess as well, because you do not receive all of your proceeds at one time.
I understand.
So we have, of our 100% pie, we have 29% of it, there's 70% of the money we receive to function as a city from other sources that we have no control of. 29% of our budget is the millage rate. So of the 4... So of the 4.5, 4.8 million dollars that we operate, we get 29% from the millage rate, from the property taxes. All the other revenue comes throughout the different times of the year. So what happens is if one month, like last year, I stood before this body and the public and advised them that the state of Georgia revised the TAVT law, the Tattle Adlorn Tax, it cut our budget by a quarter of a million dollars a year. So what happens is that is money we will not reboot. So in terms of, we did not make that up last year. We kept the millage rate the same at 4.655 mils. So the 250 we didn't get last year, we had to use fund balance to cover some of our costs. So we had to use 118,000 of our savings to cover, because we identified in August of last year, we were not going to receive that money. So we started cutting expenses, overtime being one of them, along with capital expenditures, et cetera. So go into 2020, the year we're in, we did not raise the millage rate, therefore, all of these expenses that we have tied up in personnel, which is about 80% of our general fund budget, so we don't have new vehicles, we don't have new buildings, et cetera. We do not have any control, so we have to use money from our general fund savings account. We were projected to use about 400 plus thousand of that this year. We are tracking at this moment of about 250,000. So we are still being mindful of cutting expenses where we can. We do not go and get new paper goods or new office supplies just because we need, we're cutting expenses where we can. So when you get to 2021, what we're trying to do is say, in order for us to balance next year's books, we have to adopt a millage rate now that can at least bring us closer to a point of where that 29% of the pie will widen just a little bit to accommodate some of those other revenues that we are not getting, such as the TAVT.
And without our savings, let me say one thing, that we are required by law to have a certain amount, just in case.
Oh, I can, I completely understand that. And I'm not, I'm not saying that you should spend all of your savings, God forbid we have an emergency and you don't have any funds on hand to help the police officer or the EMT, I get all that. That was a better explanation than what I've been able to find anywhere. So thank you for that. That makes it at least a lot more reasonable than the way it appeared on the face, if that makes sense at all. So, um, and I don't do what y'all do, I appreciate y'all for what y'all do. I would not want y'all's job, this is a tough job, because everybody wants to, you know, roast you every chance they get. However, so I could offer one bit of advice, I'm a very simple man. Next time you roll out something like that, so it's not so much shocking all to the general public to, who isn't going to come up here, isn't brave enough to come stay out there, just doesn't want to, put something like that on the paper, so folks can understand it and be helpful.
And Mr. Mayor, for the, for the public, I do appreciate the comment. We are required by specific OCGA code section that we have to by law phrase it and state it exactly the way that the public notice came across. If we do not phrase it in that manner, we're subjecting ourselves to a whole lot more than the public scrutiny. So what we wanted to do is these three public hearings are the forum for which interested residents can come forward and hopefully receive at least information. This is not a public dialogue. You'll notice that I'm trying to give information for the future, because there are these processes. But I do think it's important to point out for the public and for you that we do appreciate it, uh, we would like to phrase things a little differently. Unfortunately, the notice as published, uh, the official documentation can get a little cumbersome. And so it is important to have these public hearings so that we can then convey as best we can the information and then invite you all to our budget hearings and then go through the budget process that way, because we do want to earn the trust of the people, so that as we continue this process in the future, they'll slowly start understanding the, the different ways we do things.
Well, I don't, I don't disagree with what you're doing. I don't want it to come across that way. I'm just naturally a, a growth person. I would, even though you have a very specific way you guys have to put that information out, I, and I can respect that and appreciate that, this is a small town. Get one or two words to one or two other people here and there, so that you can actually get out what, what's going on. Just whether you go hang out and barbecue, or whether you go up here to the mule, or you go anywhere else for lunch, a few words of information to the general public, even through the grapevine, would be beneficial, because I promise you, had I have known that, would not have come up here. So I appreciate all y'all's time.
We appreciate you coming.
Well, that's, thank you, thank you for having me.
We want the public to be involved and know what's going on, so they know why some of the decisions are being made.
I, I don't have, like I said, I don't have a problem with the decision, but I probably, like many, did not understand the reasoning, at least, you know, for me, it was clear as mud until he helped it there.
That's why I wanted to.
It's still pretty clear.
At least for politics, right?
Thank you so much.
Thank y'all for your time.
Thank you.
I want to, I want to recognize, uh, Councilmember Kirk Raffield here with his hand up. Yes, sir? Can you go ahead?
Mayor and council and the public, I just wanted to thank you all for being there. Those of you that are from the public and are present, the conversation and the topic, our wonderful receiving exchange, being professional and kind to each other. It's a tough decision to make. There are certain things out of our control that our city manager explained and they're certain things in our control. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir. And do we have anyone else from the Zoom audience that wants to speak? And if not, then I would entertain a motion that we adjourn this meeting. So, in a second.
Second.
I'll in fact. But you're welcome.